We have a public hearing at six o'clock, which I need to grab the notice for. So I will open the public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six P. M., Public Works Facility, seventy-four Lockhaven Road and Fields, and via Teams video conference. Acting as water and sewer commissioners, the selectmen will discuss and act upon the setting of the municipal water and sewer rates in accordance with RSA thirty-five colon seven. So the public hearing is open. I assume we have a presentation.
Yep, small presentation. There's not much of a presentation, but in your packet you can see that Jim put together some water sewer rates for you. We received word from Lebanon that they're raising their rates by seven point few percent for sewer. So our recommendation is. And then for this, and then we did right. There it is. So our recommendations to raise water consumption charges eight percent to cover increase in operating costs, raise sewer consumption charges and fixed charges eight percent to cover the increase in treatment charges by the city of Lebanon and increase in our own operating costs, and raise the quarterly meeting meter charges for both water and sewer to ten percent to cover increases in meter replacement costs. So that's what we're recommending. We're we're kind of sticking with the plan that we had done by Horizon Engineering before to keep things moving forward. We are in a spot. Did you happen to send those fund balance, water sewer fund balance stuff out?
No.
You have it?
No.
No.
Well, we had roughly, we were still a deficit with the sewer, about one hundred ninety thousand, and water is in the positive and the somewhere in the four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar range.
Water sewer, water is doing fairly well on the fund balance part of it. We still think we we move forward with this. We're, right now, we're looking at the the study from Horizon and doing a little bit of a rate calculation, but we're not done with that. But we're looking at the the long-term expenses, so we decided not to make much change to what the recommendation was as we move that forward, and we can look at what we need for capital costs and determine what we want to do with fund balance at that time. On the sewer portion, we're about a year behind where we thought we would be. But we're also looking at, this year, we had some unexpended fund it's fund, so we're, we're hoping we're going to be right in that twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four timeframe of of catching up. It was supposed to be the end of twenty twenty-three. It might push into twenty twenty-four.
Discussion from the board?
No, my big question was where the sewer fund balance stood and if we were still on track to pay it off, which the the slowdown actually, I think, happened about a year and a half ago, as the rates really started to increase on the usage fees, so then balance that out with an extra year. So we're still on track with where we were over the last couple of years. So that's good.
Jim can answer any other questions if you have any, or do you have anything to add, Jim?
Yes, Jim.
Not really. I mean, primarily, the the increases are just, you know, materials and and services and the things that, you know, keep us going. The the meter cost is a little higher because the meters have gone up. I believe in the last two years, they've gone from, I think, one twenty-one to a hundred and forty-seven dollars. So that's a pretty big increase. And and in order to keep sort of pace with the replacements, we needed to jump that up a little bit more than than just sort of inflationary amount.
Yep. Questions or comments from the public present? Questions are, yep, we have Dave Bofay. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Good. Thank you. I I understand completely the reasons for the increases, given the the increases from Lebanon that you have no control over, and perhaps a marginal one percent increases to both water and sewer. My concerns are more long-term that your, that we are, the town is concentrating, increasing municipal costs on a relatively small portion of our residents, and that that will have impact over time at a eight, ten percent compounded rate for those residents and businesses in the central district, which we are trying to encourage, according to the the current plan, planning, as I understand it, to to work toward appropriate development. So I I I raise those concerns. I don't have answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yep, Phil?
When do we anticipate that deficit being paid off?
Between twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, if things continue going the same.
Okay, so that, if that goes away, that may eliminate one year's worth of price increases or something, maybe?
We'd have to look at that. I mean, we still need to build a little bit of a fund balance. The auditor recommends two to three months' worth of expenses, so that's probably another year or two down the road after that. And then we have to look at what our capital costs and replacement costs would be. But our goal right now is just getting out of that negative fund balance.
And the negative is, again, on the sewer, the water is in the positive.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments in the public hearing? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. You need a motion. The public hearing is closed at six oh seven. We need a motion approved.
Is there, I would, if you look at the back of your cover sheet when you read the public hearing, the recommended raises, we just want to make a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we set the water sewer rates with a raise in water consumption charges of eight percent to cover increases in operating costs, raise sewer consumption charges and fixed charges eight percent to cover the increase in treatment charges by the city of Lebanon and increases in our own operating costs, and raise quarterly meter charges for both water and sewer, ten percent to cover increases in meter replacement costs.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Paris, approval of the minutes. We have in our packet the minutes of December fifth. I I was not present.
Yes, do you want to wait for John, because you weren't here today?
I, we can vote on them technically. I can, unless you guys have anything, did John express any concerns?
I'll make a motion. If you approve the minutes as written.
I will second that motion. All in favor? Aye. And if John does have concern, since we both voted in affirmative, we'll put it back on the table.
Yes.
Okay. Board reports. Eric?
I was out of town for the most recent Paris Commission meeting, so I do not have anything to report.
Planning Board continues to work on word articles ahead of town meeting, and we are going to be getting a presentation. Well, we're going to be discussing the master plan and update. And David Frack, who is the Chair of the Planning Board, is here this evening, along with other members of the Planning Board, so I'm not going to belabor that point. Town managers' report.
Yep, I can give you a brief budget committee, if you'd like.
That would be fabulous, yeah. Thank you.
At our last budget committee meeting, we discussed compensation. We looked at, you guys remember Dimitri's spreadsheet from last year, looking at the Boston metric cola. We also looked at the social security increases from this year, and then I brought in a spreadsheet that had many towns from, I'll say, across the state. A lot of them were from around here, but I grabbed some chatter from the lister, the managers' listserv as well. Pulling those averages, the average raise from those municipalities, including social security, was seven point two percent. Cost of living increase this year, seven percent. So we've, we have a placeholder in the budget right now at five percent. We talked about what a one percent increase would be, and the Budget Committee asked us to run numbers at eight percent to see what it would, what the spread would look like, and we'll be talking about that at future meetings.
Now, town managers' report.
Now, town managers' report. So as you know, we have a bookkeeper position open. We have advertised that. As of today, we have thirty-eight applicants for that position. Not all of them are super qualified. I continue to review them. Me and Alisa did interview one applicant today. We'll continue looking at some applications, and we'll be interviewing probably closer to the first of the year, one or two more applicants before hopefully making a job offer. With that, we've made a job offer for our Open's groundskeeper position, which has been accepted. So Jim's been working with that applicant to get all the proper paperwork and background checks and things that need to be done done. So we're, we're hopeful that he'll be, he'll be starting in the next few weeks, and we'll, we'll have our groundskeeper position full. And then I kind of told you this was coming, but I'm happy to announce that the Enfield Police Department has completed their hiring process for our open patrolman position. After the extensive background, including polygraph psychological and background investigation, we've offered the position to Matthew Acker. He's been hired. Matthew is an Enfield resident, and for the last couple of years, after moving here from White River Junction where he grew up, Matthew lives in Enfield with his wife and baby daughter. So we welcome Matthew to the town of Enfield, and in January, we'll be hosting a swearing-in ceremony at the Select Board meeting. It's nice to bring Matthew on board. A little update on the water project, the, just a couple of short updates here. I guess the water project, Maple Street Water Main Replacement Project is now out to bid, so we're we're awaiting that. It it is in the Valley News and on the town website. If anybody's interested in bidding on that job, it's out there, ready. I sent a little bit of information, but the the new well has been, has been drilled and being tested. They drilled just over a thousand feet, and they're getting an approximate yield of twenty-five gallons per minute. So we took samples, and they've capped the top of it for now. So it's a good amount of water, a little less than we were hoping for, but it would be a good addition to our system. With that, the chipper has also been released on an RFP. We'll be looking for that to come back soon after the beginning of the year. We'll be meeting with the CIP Committee and coming back to the Select Board once we get that, look at the, what the costs are. I'm pretty sure we're going to need the forty thousand that we got from insurance, plus a little bit extra. So we'll be talking to both of you to see if we can get authorization to to purchase that. And then I also released the ambulance RFP last week, so that should be coming back in August as well, and we'll be moving forward with that. Public Safety Building and Whitney Hall Project update. SW Coal was onsite and completed six soil borings, as requested. In general, all the holes were very similar, with the soil being coarse sand or glacial till. We found water in several holes approximately five feet deep, so we're, we're going to be looking into that a little bit more, working with engineering mentors in SW Coal. We may dig a test pit or two to see if that's actually where the water table is there, or if we hit it. It was just after some of our rainstorms and stuff, so we may have captured some water. So we'll be, we'll be looking a little bit more at that before we move forward. I have signed a letter of intent with Rob Mauls to purchase the property. It's still pending the outcome of final sampling and engineering approval, but we're moving forward in that process as well. And then the, the one last thing, I'll get you some more numbers moving forward. I had talked to each of you last week, but we're, we're moving forward with Mascoma Bank for financing on Whitney Hall. We were looking at the USDA loan and the increased paperwork, the time for administrative work, and then also projected cost increase of the building somewhere in the five percent range. So looking at that, Mascoma's offered us using this very similar loan that we got for the Public Safety Building with a thirty-year amortized loan with a fixed four percent interest rate for twenty years. It's a little bit higher than the USDA rate, which was three point five percent. It may be a little bit different in January. We are expecting another increase, so I don't know what that would be. But just based on that, the difference in the entirety of the loan, if it stayed at four percent, is approximately six hundred thousand dollars, maybe just a little bit less than that. The cost of the increased building, we estimate between two hundred and seventy-eight and five hundred thousand dollars. So then that eats up a lot of that, and then, like I said, administrative costs and single audits for, I don't know how long, and reporting annually. We, we decided it might, it would be better to to move forward with Mascoma Bank, use a local bank, work with our neighbors, and, and a percent interest rate. We're continuing to do that, and we've reached out to our bond council and bank, and we're starting the paperwork. So we'll keep an eye on those interest rates before we sign anything, but we're, we're moving in that direction. And that's all I have for town managers.
Do you have any questions? Comments? Okay, questions or comments from the public? Questions or comments online? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to communications. We have a community power update. I assume that's why Kim and Joelle are here.
Great, thank you. It's very exciting. Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire is making great progress. We come and provide some information and updates to the Select Board every now and then, and we're getting really close. We're hoping to launch in April, so it's a very exciting and very busy time. As a little reminder, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire is a nonprofit government-type organization, which buys power on the wholesale market, electric power, and provides it to its members. Enfield is one of those wannabe members. There's quite a few of us, and the early members are the ones who are creating all of the policies and rate setting and things like that, working with some really powerful partners that we had to go through RFPs and do real interviews with and, and, and select. So when, the point of it, of course, is to reduce the, the electric rates that we pay in Enfield. Anybody who is on a, what's called a default rate, if they have not chosen to pick, to use a different electrical energy provider, then they can, they will be, if Enfield decides to go forward with this, then they will be defaulted to Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire's power. We buy power on, or the group buys power on the wholesale market, which means we can get better rates, and we're going to aggregate all of the towns and municipalities that join, all of the members, so we have a large load, and we can get good rates, which is different than what Liberty and Eversource and Unitil can do and what they're sort of required to do by the PUC. The community choice, the Community Power Coalition, CPCNH, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, does have to abide by all the same PUC rules in terms of being able to provide for low-income, extra help, and various things like that, net metering and, and all of that. So, and we, and Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire is not taking over the responsibility of the utility that brings the wires to your house, Liberty or Eversource. If they own the wires to your house, they manage them, they keep them up during these power outages. So that's sort of the background. If you got, you want to go to the next slide, it's, the, one of the reasons it's so exciting is that Enfield got in early on this, and so we have both Joellen and myself as directors and alternates, and have been involved in all these key agreements and policies. Enfield, as a town, has had a voice, and you have it, and you have, we have an opportunity here to review all those key agreements, policies, risk management, et cetera, to set the stage for all of the members. And there are twenty-five members now? I think it's twenty-eight, twenty-eight members, growing quickly. But the first twenty of them will continue to set the stage, do the, be on the Board of Directors, and then over time, they rotate out, and you, and we will get new, new, new directors. So today, I'm bringing the information about the key policies that Enfield can review, the Select Board would have to agree to as part of the directorate of CPCNH. And then a little further down the line, there'll be the actual member services contract, which is the, the only thing you would see if you were going to contract with somebody for energy services, would just be that one contract. But as Enfield, as being involved in the early startup, we get to have a say in all these other policies. So I'm just gonna briefly talk about the policies, but certainly you should come to either one of us, and Ed probably has to do a little more depth, and maybe even provide them to legal. It is whatever you see is, is the right things to do. Okay, so we'll look at the policies, we'll look at where we are, and a little bit about the team. You might not do number three with the eight to eleven slides. We don't need to go there necessarily, but they're there for your, for reason. So go ahead. The key policies, so the, the, the first one, two, three, four policies there are the ones that, again, we're involved as Enfield because we're helping to create these policies. People coming into the program later on will only get the member services contract at the bottom. So to some extent, that's the one that says, what am I going to pay for electricity if I join? How long will I join for? A three-year term or whatever? So that's the one that kind of makes sense to this group a little bit more than all the rest of them. So, well, actually, I'll, the cost-sharing agreement is the one that talks about how we set up, we have to buy power, CPCNH has to buy power, and then it has to allocate the cost of those power, that power to each of its member communities. Enfield being one of the members. And all the startup costs get spread out over three years amongst all the members, and so how those are being spread out. So some costs are being distributed per kilowatt hour that each person is using, all the, the actual usage. Some costs are based on your member, you're, you're a member, you get one twentieth or one twenty-fifth of the cost. So there's a lot of detail in there, and you can read as much of that as you like. The energy portfolio risk management policy is the one that talks about how we're managing our risk in this wholesale market. There's, just if you can imagine, the stock market or anything else. The partners we're working with are watching that market every day. They have to look two days, two minutes ahead, two days ahead, two months ahead, and they provide a whole portfolio, what they suggest we buy, to get the best prices for the long term on the wholesale market. So we have to manage them, and so you can't go beyond these boundaries, or we are taking too much risk. And so that's another piece that we've gotten into. The actual retail rates policy, how we're going to set up what's available for people to buy, and the financial reserves. So one of the things we have to have with any risky business, risky wholesale market business, is we have to have financial reserves. So it's a tiny piece of the kilowatt hour dollars that everybody has to put in there, and the reserves have to give us sixty days of working power, of being able to continue managing our people and resources within the first two years or something, and up to a hundred and eighty days of reserves further along down the line, up to five years. I think five years from now, we have to have a full set of reserves. And so that's what those are. And then the member services contract will be what we end up signing. And the thing that the town will normally be choosing is what's the default you want, and you don't get to choose the actual rate, but what's, what's the default? There's four levels of service, kind of the lowest price, the next price up that still meets all of the New Hampsters, or has an extra thirty percent of renewables, and the next rate up has like fifty percent renewables, and then a hundred percent renewables. So there'll be choices that we get to decide what's the default for Enfield, and it might just be lowest cost is default for it. And lowest cost is still going to be, and then we've just been doing the modeling, it looks like it's going to be four or five percent lower than Eversource and Liberty. So it's going to be a pretty good discount. Okay, you can go to the next slide. I'm not going to go over this. The cost-sharing agreement, though, has the, makes, wants to really emphasize that every member has to be treated fairly and get their costs proportioned appropriately. So let's see if I highlight anything there. Shares, and then, of course, the implementation. Shares are evenly across five years. I said three years, but it's five years. Across the first five years, all of the members, as they come on, are paying some of those costs, and by the end of five years, we're just paying operational every year. The term is three years. So the term that we are at, that every member will be signing up for when they do sign up, is a three-year term to be with CPCNH. Now, within that three-year term, any individual can opt out, or any business or municipality, anybody can opt out, but the town can't opt out. Well, there are some ways for the town to get out under certain circumstances, but for the most part, you're signing up for three years to, to be with Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. For the people who have not chosen a different electric provider. Okay, does that make sense? Well, that's there. This sort of describes a little bit about how the energy portfolio risk management outlines the mechanisms to financial safeguards, the retail policy, it feeds into the retail policy rates and the financial reserves. So the retail rates and the financial reserves end up adding up to what is the energy rate we have to charge. And so if Liberty is charging twenty cents, and we'll be able to charge a little bit less, but all the pieces are, there's the energy piece, which is the biggest piece, but there's little percentages of a penny that go on there to, to address the financial reserves, to address the operating and the administration costs, et cetera. So this is probably where, just to give us a where we are, and so the head, next slide. Okay, we have already appointed the Electric Aggregation Committee. That's a subcommittee from our Energy Committee here in Enfield. We've adopted the Joint Powers Agreement that was done as Select Board in September of two thousand twenty-one. We pointed the Director and Alternate to serve on the board and help develop the, and we created the Enfield Community Power Plan, which is what is generically called the Electric Aggregation Plan. We've sent those in. They had to be approved by the PUC and by the utilities. So the next steps are for, since we are an early member, our governing board needs to adopt the portfolio risk management, retail rates, and financial reserves policy, which you've gotten a copy of. It's a draft copy, but we're finalizing them right now at CPCNH. Excuse me, they have been approved. We just don't have the final copy. Yes, it'll be any day now. And then each government governing, the governing body accepts the cost-sharing agreement, the membership agreements, and then each member has to review the, also, specific membership contract. That is what we're going to pay. Okay, so that's, and the, basically, the, the target launch is that April, May, two thousand twenty-three. It's very exciting. Okay, keep going. We won't go through this. We'll go through this really quickly. We already said what community power is, lowering the costs and access to renewable energy. So it gives us more access to renewable energy, especially renewable energies that we could have really locally. That can help bring down the costs when CPCNH can buy that. Okay, legislator, okay, keep going. Liberty and Eversource will continue to deliver electricity to the customers, as I was saying. They own the lines, but CPCNH has to help with the billing. It has to know who, where all the loads are, how much money is moving from place A to place B. And so we get involved in all of that. And notice, I did not put New Hampshire Electric Co-op. So New Hampshire Electric Co-op is already a membership, and they are already buying power on the wholesale market. And so as a group, CPCNH has decided not to opt in New Hampshire Electric Co-op members. If they can absolutely join if they want to, they would have to opt in on their own. But Liberty and Eversource customers will absolutely be able to get a five percent discount, and so we're opting them in by this JPA, all the stuff we've been doing for so long, opting them in automatically, and you can opt out, or you could opt to a different energy source. Does that make sense? That's probably one of the most important things that we're doing this for, is to get the lower price. Participation is completely voluntarily. At the, at the individual level, you can opt out. So again, Enfield would be signing an agreement for three years to work with CPCNH, but anybody can opt out, even if the town has opted you in originally. Does that make sense? Okay, good. Okay, and that's what the last bullet says. This just shows you all the towns and cities. So near us, Hanover, Lebanon, Plainfield, there's some big cities that are getting involved, and, well, it's New Hampshire. And we just got two new ones. Oh, yeah, oh, Warren and New London are near us, right? Right. Okay, so you could read that stuff or not. That's fine. Right, okay, so you could read that stuff or that's fine. The difference between the coalition and a broker model. Again, now this gets into some lots of details. So skip down, I think the one I want is now at the very end. There's people, I'm treasurer right now, Clifton Bealow from Lebanon is the chair. You can see some of the others who are on the board of directors, maybe you know some people, okay? And these are the people we're working with. So Calpine, I'll just quickly say, Calpine Energy is helping us with all the backend billing and customer service. So when, when, let's say, Enfield chooses to do this and all of the people who are not on default service become part of CPC and H. If there's any issue or question or somebody wants to opt in or opt out, we will have both a website and we have a whole Calpine company behind us who will help make those things happen, will be the customer service people. They ascend, they are doing all of the energy portfolio risk management. They model the energy market and give us all the statistics and about where we are and what we should buy and help us with the risk management stuff. New Hampshire Clean Energy, New Hampshire on the right, they are helping us with public service, with member services. Just helping to get the word out about what is community power and can eat, what towns, how could a town get involved, things like that. We have, we have legal counsel, DWGMP, we have a couple of startup consultants who've been with us for for two years now. And then we have River City Bank is doing the higher-end accounting service. We're also working with Mascolma Bank locally for for standard accounts. But the River City Bank is going to be doing specialty lockbox things, if anybody knows what that is. I get help, but we don't need to do that now. Okay, next, keep going, some more people. Okay, let's go all the way to the end now. Yep, these are all people in all these different nice places. Okay, so this, this is the one. So what we are looking at for the things that Enfield is going to choose as part of the contract is a Granite Basic, Granite Plus, Clean 50 or Clean 100. Granite Basic being a minimum RPS. So we have a renewable portfolio standard in New Hampshire that requires 23.4% renewable. And so our Granite Basic can provide that. It will then be a lower cost than Liberty or EverSource's version of the same thing. This would be, this could be the fault or Enfield could choose that Granite Plus is the fault, which is a little bit more 33% renewable or carbon free. It would be a little bit more expensive right now, but that could be our default and people could opt to a lower, a little bit slightly lower. Or anyone can opt up to 50% renewable or 100% renewable. So we don't have to decide tonight, but when when the contract is actually in front of Ed, we will have wanted to make that decision. I think the select board should have their input on that and and have that, make that decision. Okay, I'm going to stop here because this is a lot of information and I'm happy and we're happy to take questions and make suggestion about moving forward. And the suggestion is that these documents are getting finalized now. We don't necessarily have to bring this up to another select board meeting. If at this one, we're willing to say, Ed, the rest is up to you, we think this is a good idea. Or however you might move to do that. If you want to wait until the next select board meeting, we could do that as well. It's just we're getting to the point at CPC and H where they need commitments. And so probably before then, Ed would have all the information he needs to make a commitment or not. And 5% right now is the discount that we're looking at.
On the basic.
On the, on the lowest level, yeah. So maybe it'll be 3% or something on the plus, the grand plus. Questions? Do you have anything to add before we start covering questions?
Nothing there.
No, I read through a lot of it beforehand, so that's very thorough.
Yeah, I would not want to be the one doing the hedging, that's my comment. Not only give you some nightmares right there, I was like, oh.
We have some really good partners. It's fun working with them, they really know what they've been doing. They've been doing this with some California and other CSA companies. And it's been a great learning experience.
I can say I've logged into a few of the discussions with the attorney talking about contract language back and forth. Just to start to wrap my head around it a little bit and yeah, there's very knowledgeable consultants and very knowledgeable people working on this. It gave me a pretty good level of comfort that 20 different towns coming together, really looking at this topic. Providing a document that's fair for everybody.
I saw in one of the very early meetings, I, you know, I think people are being proceeding with caution. I liked seeing the number of risk management angles. So I would be comfortable having you run it through legal or whatever needs to be done.
Oh, I am absolutely am. I think they've accomplished everything they've said so far. I mean, having a default option that's less expensive than the current default option is all we need to know as far as going forward. And then the people who want more options have them and that's great.
Questions from the public who are present physically?
I have one question, Kim. The people who are on the New Hampshire Electric Co-op won't be conscripted into this, but they'll have an opportunity to make the decisions themselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public presence? Okay, online questions, we have Dave Bofe.
Hello.
Hello.
I, I mean, this all seems very intriguing, but I have some concerns. Obviously, the economies of scale are what can make, make or break this. And it's the individual rate pairs in each of the 20 towns that you're talking about. And I don't, I, I haven't heard what's your expected penetration of that, of that consumer base maybe. And that would be an important factor to consider. Because otherwise it can be a little bit of a bait and switch of 5% now, but what is it later? And that's, that's of some concern as well. Thank you.
And it is a good concern, that actually came up in one of our meetings today at CPC and H, is that we don't want to be like some energy providers who do exactly that kind of bait and switch. The good news is that we're member driven and our members won't put up with that either. So we're not profit driven or, you know, a for-profit corporation. So it is a good, but, but having said that, it is a very good time right now for CPC and H to launch because the prices are so high and the utilities had to buy their energy, you know, at a different timeframe. So that 5% is really good and and it's, and it's good right now. But and we intend every time that there's another, every half a year, because that's how often the other utilities have to go to market, to be able to look at that again and continue to do the best we can. Will it always be 5% forever and ever? It can't, it hopefully sometimes it'll be more. Hopefully, you know, that that we'll be able to offer a whole lot of other programs and things as we get larger. And but we can't guarantee 5% forever. So I think that's really the only answer I can give you right now. Are there any further questions? Thank you very much.
You will need a motion if you want to do it tonight or we can prepare a motion. I'm working on one, but what are the agreements that you need now?
There are policies, the energy portfolio risk management policy, retail rate, retail rate policy and the financial reserves policy.
It's for a memory.
And then there's a cost sharing agreement. So that's like a separate one. The other three policies are all in one document and they've all been approved by the board. The cost sharing one is being, because sharing one is still being refined. Word of day, refined. Hours.
If the cost sharing one's agreement is still being refined, we can't act on that.
Correct. Well, Ed could later.
Right, no, but I just said like tonight, we don't have a final agreement to act on. That are all equally important as far as our actions.
They're all, yes, at some point.
No, 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 but I mean, is there value in doing some of them tonight that we can versus?
I would recommend coming back at the next meeting and doing either three motions or one motion authorizing me to enter into the agreement.
I mean, I'm happy to do it tonight if there's value in doing things tonight. But if it's easier to have a full package with the final cost sharing agreement.
What you can do tonight is just make a motion to authorize me to work with the town attorney to review and prepare these documents for final adoption.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to work with the attorney to review and finalize. And prepare the documents for our next meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. We are moving on to master plan updates. And I'll have, I think with Lindsay too, so David and Lindsay, if you want to approach simply because I think people will hear you better on the hour.
I would love to. So I see that we're on the agenda twice, once to talk about where we are now and then a little bit later in the meeting to talk about where we want to go from here.
Why don't we, why don't we consolidate that unless anyone has any objection?
I would love, I would love that. Thank you. So the update on the master plan, I have two versions of my report, the short one, it's done. And I can give you a summary of what we've done in the last three and a half years. Believe it or not, all three members of the select board have been involved in the master planning process in one way or another. Kate and John as our ex-officio members on the planning board. Eric, you've been on the planning board and somehow we managed to draft you into serving on the master planning task force. So you are very well aware and Kate is well aware of what we've been doing. We've been through all of the public meetings, workshops, proofreading. And we think we have it in a, in a final form. We've scheduled the required public hearing before the planning board for the 28th. It's the Wednesday between Christmas and New Year's. And I suspect that because of all the public involvement that we've had to date, that we're not going to get any curves thrown at us. And, you know, so far, most of the feedback that we've had has been very, very positive. You guys will note that there is an implementation section. And those are the recommendations of the Master Planning Task Force and the Planning Board on what needs to be done going forward. These are recommendations only. We're not volunteering people, although we will ask people to volunteer. And we're not setting policies. That's what the select board does. So use that implementation matrix as a guide, a jumping off point. And I'm sure there will be many, many, many discussions going forward on who does what and when it gets done. So anything to add on our work to date?
Nope, I mean, I think we've, we've updated people pretty regularly. So I feel like everybody will look around the room is who's here. Pretty well versed on where we're at. So a lot of work's gone into it and we're excited to have the hearing next week. And get this, get this portion done in order to move on to the next piece.
Any questions?
No questions. I would just say, I think it's fantastic, the whole process is great. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that hundreds of people in town have been a part of this plan. And I think each and every person should feel good about that.
Isn't it in the 300s, Linds?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you think about that, I mean, getting 300 people to participate in an activity takes a long time. And you did it successfully and I think you brought it all together very well.
And during COVID.
Yes. I think it's, I think it's excellent.
Let's go. We learned a lot the first time. We know how to do it.
Which means you're going to get those other chapters done really fast.
And we are going to get the, the next chapters done. The timeline that I've put together calls for adoption sometime in 2024. Tentative budget for our next five chapters, which are on the whiteboard, which are energy, conservation, heritage and preservation, recreation and municipal facilities and services. All of these chapters have boards, committees, commissions, task force, what have you, that are already working and have been working for some period of time. So we're going to hit the ground running. We're going to ask members of these boards, committees, et cetera, to lend their expertise. And hopefully we'll be able to persuade one or more members to join the master plan task force for the second round. Not a requirement, but we are down a little bit on our membership. People have rotated off. Some people have put in a lot of time and kind of reached their limit of what they're willing to do or able to do. And some new blood is always good on a group of people that are trying to get something done. Tentative budget for the next phase is $24,470. And that number fits very nicely into a grant availability, which is funded ultimately by the, what's it called? The cares, COVID US cares, Ed, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's some of the, some of the COVID months. It's federal states allocated for increasing housing.
And it's, it's funneled through New Hampshire Invest, Invest New Hampshire and the New Hampshire Housing. So they have several grant programs that relate to housing. We are going to try for a grant that will cover the next five chapters. They don't specifically relate to housing, but if they have an implication or a bearing on housing, they are willing to consider it. I have taken the position that, yeah, we've got a housing chapter already in the can. But Enfield has had some issues with growing housing over the last at least 20 years. Our population has declined. We're issuing about 20 building permits a year on the average. And most of those are for replacement housing. So our net gain is very, very small. The Keys to the Valley, which was the housing project by three regional planning agencies, has identified, what is it, 10,000 dwelling units that are needed in the upper valley as a minimum. And our fair share is something obviously less than that, than that, the number escapes me. But I'm taking the position that if we relate energy and conservation and heritage and recreation and municipal facilities and how we can improve those. Like for instance, with energy, if you build an energy efficiency, an energy efficient structure, it will have a lower overall cost. It will have a lower overall cost to own and operate than going for the lowest bidder. Uh, heritage and preservation, we've got a lot of older buildings in town. That theoretically could be converted into housing and or multiple unit housing. Uh, recreation is a quality of life issue and in our first round of master plan. Um, recreation was identified as one of the major attractive forces. That bring people into Enfield, want to make them visit and hopefully. Will make them want to live here if they can find a place to live. So, um, by tying these things into housing, I'm somewhat hopeful that we will get. At least part of the twenty, twenty-five thousand that we're asking for. But if we don't, I would like to see twenty-five thousand in the. Uh, upcoming budget. As a fallback so that we can get this thing done. And I guess I would like to ask the support of the select board for that twenty-five K.
Have you discussed it with budget committee at all yet?
We have discussed it with budget committee. It's on my list of things to possibly fund with fund balance moving forward. It's not in the budget.
That, that was gonna be my question is, is there a fund balance? This is exactly the kind of project that now that we have a reasonable designated fund, we could use fund balance for.
Yeah, we'll be talking about that at the budget committee. I put together a list of projects just like this one that could. That could be used through one-time fund balance funds to complete a project.
So we're essentially going to, um, suggest the same game plan. As we did for the first round. Educational workshops, one for each topic where the individual boards can get together with the public. Let the public know what the mission of the board or committee is. Start a discussion, get some feedback, do, uh, farmers market. Yeah, that kind of contact we found to be pretty effective, one-on-one conversations. Um, we'll probably do one workshop, community-wide workshop in the fall of twenty-three. And, um, once we have a draft, we'll do one or more focus groups to get people's reaction. So essentially it'll, it'll be the same game plan unless our new members have other ideas that. Um, might make the process better.
So new members, um, I think, who, how were they chosen last time?
Um, the new members last, or the first time, uh, were chosen by the planning board.
Okay.
And they were done by, uh, application. People sent in answered short questionnaire, um, demographic, age, where they lived. What their interest in planning is. And I don't remember the other questions.
Yeah, I think we have, we have at least four. Three, four people I know that are returning, um, but there's a couple that we, from the current task force. Um, and then there's a couple that we're not sure of. Um, I, I personally want to make it a requirement for any of these committees and stuff. To have one person from each committee or commission or whatever that's being represented for energy, conservation, heritage. Recreation, municipal facilities, to have one person be on the task force. Um, I would like to make that happen so that they're, they have a constant present. And that will give us another five. Um, and so we may have two openings potential for anyone, general public. So we may put up the same application process, but we have a couple of committee members that we weren't sure about.
Yeah, so we.
Yeah, we have a, we have a pretty full, full plate of, of people already. It's just kind of really communicating with these, with the, um. The, the committees and commissions, um, and seeing if they will at least nominate somebody and if not, one consistent person. You know, having somebody that rotates through, so just they have a seat and that it's filled by, by someone. So that way that's. Um, there's, there's a lot of overlap there since we're tackling no subjects. Um, and we need the, the people that, that deal with those subjects all the time to be present. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, basically, um, after the first of the year. We will reconvene the master planning task force, see who's still wants to work on it. We'll probably prepare some written. Information and send those out to the various boards and committees by way of an invitation. And invite them to come into one of our meetings and talk about, uh, what we're going to do. So. Any questions?
Comments? I think part of, part of, but one thing we did discuss about with some of that money was to, to track return on investment. Look at what, what, what our current master plan is doing and how that, how that affects. Interest in the community and interest in, in the town of Enfield once we get it published and out there.
That'll be a different grant, Phil.
That'll be what?
A different grant.
Different grant.
I think so.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up because that's another.
It, it's a thing that we should be doing, absolutely.
Should be tracking.
So. Coming out of this version of the master plan, uh, we want to do a zoning rewrite. And fortunately, the same granting agency, New Hampshire Housing. Um, has grants up to a hundred thousand for rewriting your zoning. As long as it better promotes housing. So I think after the first of the year, um. A team of, we don't know who yet, will be getting together and budgeting that project out. And writing an appropriate grant, but that's next year's work. And I, I think we could probably include, um, some money for tracking the return on investment. Um, as part of, part of that grant or maybe even a, a different level of the grant, but, uh. It's coming along. Anything else?
I assume that the, between planning and the town manager's office will evaluate the grants and how labor intensive they are to administer, right?
Yeah, no, we've been looking at these grants. These grants are, are fairly easy and it falls right into our wheelhouse of what we should be working on.
And ac- actually what they're doing is. The, the, the same activities that were done administratively to get this. First part of the plan done.
Right.
Uh, there may be a, a little bit of a burden in excess. But, uh, basically it'll be the same kind of budget tracking and identifying of deliverables. Et cetera.
Do you need anything in particular from us tonight other than a general sense of whether we're comfortable with this or?
Yeah, I would recommend the master plan grant was on here on business to get your approval to put in for that since it would be. Select board that would have to accept those funds if we received them. And then if they wanted. A recommendation from the select board to the budget committee that this would be a viable project to budget for. That's what it would be and we could take that to the budget committee that you, you recommend this project moving forward. Or for them to consider the project anyway.
The other, the other thing on this, um, plan grant or master plan grant. Is that, and Kate, you're aware of this, is that it can be, um, proposed by the town. Or by the town planning board. And we don't know which way we're going to go. The planning board already voted to authorize the planning board. To be the grant applicant if that's what is decided is the best way to go. So. That decision needs to be made. Ed and I have put it on the table, but we have not reached a decision. And, uh, just wanted to make you aware that there are two options here. I don't know which. Which option gives us the better chance of getting the grant, um.
Yeah.
Say, I don't, I don't think it really matters if it wants to come from the planning board. That's great. I think what gives us the best option moving forward is both boards supporting. The grant and making sure that that's clear in the grant, that this has gone before the planning board and select board and it's been approved.
So we just need a motion to. Direct the town manager to.
Yeah, I would just make a motion. I'd make it simple, make a motion to approve. Submit a, of a master plan grant in up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion. I made a motion to approve, uh, the application of a master plan grant of up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion as our further discussion. Okay, thing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, guys.
And then I'll make a motion to recommend it, recommend. Including, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in planning costs. To the budget process, but to the budget.
Recommend them considering, considering.
Yeah, yep.
Consider, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
They consider any five thousand.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay.
Can I ask for one more motion?
Oh.
Uh, can I, can I ask for a motion indicating support of the first version of the master plan? When we have our hearing next week? Is that inappropriate?
Should we be doing it at? Or should we be sitting through the public hearing first on it? I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just wondering.
I don't know that it's appropriate because it's not on the.
Right.
It's not, yeah.
My question, I was going to ask a question of, is there any issue with me attending? Is there any issue with me attending that hearing next week in terms of like?
It shouldn't.
No, I just, I just want to make sure because I'm.
If we're going to have multiple select board members and they're going to weigh in and discuss it, we can warn it as a joint meeting.
Warn it. It, it can't possibly hurt.
No, it certainly can't hurt, um, because assuming something doesn't happen, I'm planning to attend.
Okay.
Because I, I'm in favor of the draft as is and, you know, hope that everything goes forward, um, but if it's not.
You both are. I don't think it would hurt to. Recommend an option, but.
Oh, okay.
Master plan update, so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it's inappropriate. If you want to do it and if you don't.
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend the draft master plan as presented this evening.
I will second that motion. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you and we'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. We'll see you after Christmas.
Uh, David, I have one question. When is?
Whoa, wait, excuse me. You, can you, is this a question you're going to have within the meeting? We just closed the subject. Or are you have a personal question outside of the meeting?
I wanted to ask him when the conservation commissions want to participate, twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-three. Everybody will be participating in twenty-three. The process will go into twenty-four, so in essence, the. The, the commission will be involved for the entire process.
And I think.
From when it starts to when it ends. It'll start in twenty-three at some point. If we get the grant, it might start immediately.
I think that we can discuss the logistics outside so we can continue with the agenda and, and, and I'm sure you guys can work it out on the timing. Yes. Okay.
Okay, works for me.
Fabulous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are back under communications. We are on New Hampshire liquor permission notices. We have a notice from both Family Dollar and Kitchen Fifty-Six.
The only thing I wanted to update, I sent you guys an email. Because, uh, before applying for this. Kami Duffin asked if we would write a letter stating that we were aware of, but if we had any concerns with them. I did write a letter for her stating that I had talked to the, the police chief, the building inspector, the planning. Development office and there were, there were no issues. She does plan on keeping Kitchen Fifty-Six pretty much the same as it is now. I mean, you're king to do that, so. We wrote that and then we wanted to put this on the agenda. For you guys to see if you've had any comments or if you wanted to, to do anything moving forward, but. We have, our recommendations would be to really not respond. It says right in the liquor commission letters. If we don't respond, then.
Five minutes, five minutes. Okay, moving right along under business. We have USDA grants and this is the grant approval.
Yeah, so we've been, we've been working. We've been keeping you guys apprised. We've talked with USDA through the loan process and the grant process. Uh, what we did learn on the, on the rural development, building, community facilities. Grant is they don't like to fund brick and mortar structures. Um, we also just learned last week that we're. Right on the threshold, whether we qualify or not to get this, but we decided to go ahead and apply for the grant anyway. We have approximately eighty thousand dollars worth of contents that would need to go into the building as we finish this and outfit the building. And we would like to apply for a grant for forty-four thousand dollars to the USDA. Community facilities grant program. On behalf of the town and the public.
So this eighty thousand seems kind of low for outfitting as in like just be really basic items. Okay.
And, yeah, we put the lockers in there, which is a fairly expensive item for the locker rooms. We did add some smart TVs, those types of things to the training room. She pretty much said anything that you could unbolt from the wall and carry out of the building, they'd be willing to possibly thought that. So we really, Chief Holland worked with her, talking through a lot of the stuff, so it's. Like I said, desks, chairs, tables, all the stuff we think we would need to outfit the building.
Uh, make a motion to authorize the town manager who is designated to apply for the USDA community facilities grant program. In the amount of forty-four thousand dollars to help offset the eighty thousand dollar cost to outfit the town's new public safety building.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Question or comment? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Hey, we are on conservation commission warrant articles. Dr. Tyce, you want to come up? And I know there was a presentation last time. I saw the one I saw in plant, that part of some stuff in planning board, so. I think it's a continuation. What, what's the objective? Okay, so we don't need to rehash the whole thing. We're trying to sort out what we actually want to do.
Like what at the last meeting decided to.
Yeah, we're open to have a full continued of us.
I know, I know. I, you know what? Sometimes, no, I appreciate it, but, and I, I do trust your judgment.
It also gave you time to, to think about it.
Yeah, yeah, I intended to be here, but. Didn't work out for me. All right, so, um, do we want to just go article by article or what would work, work best? So.
Well, the first article has already been removed.
Okay, that one's so, we're taking that out.
And I, uh, about the second article, we reduced to ten percent instead of fifty percent.
Okay, and there was a question in the second article on what you had for a plan? Right?
Yes, that was the, the question was for what the plan would be for that money.
Oh, basically it's to provide, um, funds for maintenance of the trails. This would require gasoline for chainsaws, insurance to cover liability. And some compensations for materials, uh, and also, uh. These, these funds base, well, the, uh. Decisions about what to do would be made by the trail master, which we plan to pursue.
And why would hiring of effectively staff and funding stuff be better done through the conservation commission or through the regular budgetary process?
Because they're not going to get a salary. All they're going to do is be compensated for materials that are expended. So there won't be a, won't be a town uh, fee. It would be paid through the conservation fund, which is uh, something that the conservation fund can expend.
And what's the anticipated dollar amount? What, what do we anticipate you'll get in terms of ten percent on average? Do we know?
And I think, so the last three years was fifty thousand, so it would have been not each year, but subtotal for the three years was about fifty thousand.
And do we, is there a plan for maintenance? Like, do we know, do we need five thou- thousand, or?
Well, that, I mean, that's the next one, is the plan written down, or is it just a, a concept at this point?
Well, this particular uh, warrant article is going to be circulated amongst the people, and we've been, we get twenty-six or whatever number of signatures, then it, if I understand it correctly, it will go on the ballot. So my, my point is that this ten percent was.
So that's why we're here. If the select board puts it on, you don't need to petition anything. If you petition when they decide not to.
Well, I understand that, I understand that. So I'm, I'm basically here to see what the select board is willing to do, and then we're prepared to put it out ourselves. The question of the ten percent, if it comes to the point where this is an ex- exceptional amount of money, I think that the conservation commission would be willing to forego that particular year's contribution. I don't know that we have a.
I don't think you have that.
I think you could set a cap in the article.
All right.
If you wanted to do it that way, I know.
Yeah, we can do that. Uh, the Canaan people get a uh, a total amount of their um, uh, current use the, up to a total of five thousand. So yeah, we can do that. It'll, it'll be basically come out the same, and if what you've just calculated, if it's ten percent, you said it was going to be five thousand. But, you know, if people start building houses here and taking land out of country. We have, the conservation commission has got approximately forty-six percent of the total su- total area of Enfield considered to be territory worth conservation. Mu- much of it is not even buildable because of steep slopes or wetlands or that kind of thing. But what I'm trying to point out is that we've reached, and we've sent that to the planning board, some idea of what is needed. And then we have the list of the trails that need to be. So we have a reasonable cap that could be accomplished as far as cost is concerned. We're not out to get rich. All we want to do is to maintain the quality of the recreational facilities here.
Okay. Do you want to go through all of them, and then?
Yeah, we can, either way.
There's only one more.
He said there's only one more.
There's, okay, three.
The one.
The reason, the reason, the zoning article, which is.
Yeah. And we've already worked that out with David Track.
Um, and then the conservation article four, okay.
That's the town forest.
Okay.
Well, they've already submitted a petition.
Yeah, one, one of the things I would like to ask, uh, there's been talk at a couple of the boards uh, selectman meetings about a committee that was reviewing that particular hundred acres. I would, uh, the conservation commission would like to get the names of the people on that committee.
There is no committee.
I was gonna say, I haven't heard anything about a committee.
The committee was for Johnston Drive. There was some confusion. There's not a committee for this property. We simply asked, we simply asked the town manager to look into, yeah, to look into options.
I did, I did talk to a logger who said it was completely logged eight years ago, and it's fairly worthless for logging, and will be for many years, but I'm waiting for a written report instead of a verbal report.
Okay.
So I would like to get copy of that for the conservation commissions.
Yep, once I get something.
And uh, for the town citizens edification. Okay, so I don't have anything else. There was no committee.
So really, we just need to look at the article, the two. Um, what's your pleasure?
Well, I think if there's still going to be changes, they had a cap to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we don't have a final, when, when's the last day we can act on it? And that still gives them time to do.
We can, we can work with it too. I mean, we can, we can help write that to make sure that it, it says everything and it's written legally.
And maybe left out a bit of a plan, because when we put some, you know, if we put something on a warrant, you want to put it on with the goal of getting people's opinion, and hopefully you put it on because you think it is a worthwhile project and you want to pass.
Well, I, I have looked up in the calendar, and I think February seventh of twenty-twenty-three is the last date to file a warrant article. That's what it says in the town calendar.
That, for a petitioned article, so.
Petitioned article.
If, if uh, the board of selectmen puts it on voluntarily, you would want them to do it early enough that if they choose not to, you have time to do a petition.
Well, that's what I thought I was here for today.
That, that's why I'm asking the question, just like. If we I think we want to get it sorted out of, is, is it a, what the cap is. I think having a cap is actually pretty critical, given that, you know, there's a I mean, it's a total concept at this point, but the, the potential large development would be a very large amount of money. You know, and then it would, I mean, I participated in, you know, professional trail crews in the past, so it's definitely I think a nice thing to spend some money on our, on our trail. That's a good part of what's being in town, so I'm kind of on the, it seems like maybe we could get that into our regu- regular budget process. But, you know, that's not critical to me.
No, and I would, I mean, I would agree with that, but the, the trail master position and stipend could be in the budget, or should be in the budget, like every other stipend.
Right.
A budget for trail maintenance and those things can be, you know, in the materials or the recreation, but either one.
Yeah.
I would prefer to see a trail master be a stipend position, I guess, if we're gonna embark on this journey, because everybody starts out with very good intentions, volunteering and leading projects, and then, you know, life happens. Um, and we tend to use the same people to volunteer over and over, and eventually they get tired rightfully, or they want to retire. Oh, my goodness. So I want to, I think to provide longevity, if you really want to embark on this, commit to doing a trail system, and then you, you kind of need a plan in place and to involve the budget committee and have their buy-in.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's very important, and not to just toss it out and be like, by the way. Uh, and I'm not saying you're doing that, you're doing the right process. Absolutely. I just want to make sure we're being fair to all of the parties who would be involved. What's our insurance like when we let people wander around with chainsaws who aren't employees?
Well, I mean, to look, I mean, they could, they definitely, I believe, would be insured.
Okay.
If they fill out the volunteer form to do maintenance, mechanics may not like untrained people wielding chainsaws.
They, they.
On either side.
For trail, I mean, I don't know how it would be for a town, but for the trail crews I've worked for, yeah, you had to have specialized training in order to operate a chainsaw, which is why lots of trail crews work with hand tools on them, which is very doable on our trail si- system, if that's the direction we wanted to go on.
Yeah.
There's not, you know, nothing's deep in the woods, nothing's hard to access.
Yeah, you'd have to take the appropriate chainsaw classes.
We can, really cool recreation, conservation, training, learn to use a chainsaw. Who doesn't want to know how to use a chainsaw? Me, that's the answer.
You'd have to take the certified New Hampshire class.
Right, but I'm saying, like, it might be an opportunity for something totally different that no one else has done before too, right?
And, and there's also, you know, I mean, other, other expenses to get into that, because you have to have the right boots, the right chaps, the right, you know, helmet. Uh, you know, it's, but that's uh, that's just, those are details involved in, in doing it. But I, I guess, I, I guess I sort of feel like this is the type of expenditure that it should go through the budget process. You know, fundamentally, it's a meaningful thing to do, and it would help the town, and it's, you know, we've got great trails in Collet Brook and up in Harris Brook um, that are on town property, and it's worth maintaining them, but.
So, and that brings up a really good point. So if we were to do a percent that had a cap, then in order to change it, we would have to go back to town meeting. Or we'd have two allocations, one from the article, which is a little bit of a pain to track it, I think. I mean, you know, the ones that are longstanding, like you guys, like if we put in, this isn't like the nickel we talk about, and then we vote on it. This is like a nickel every time, and you have to keep track of it. And I'm not saying it's nickel, but you know. It doesn't provide for like fuel quadruples, or insurance says you need a rider just for this activity. So I guess, yeah, putting it through budget makes a lot of sense, because then it will ask you to have that community check, like, are we allocating the right amounts?
Well, the other thing this would do, unless it was written very strictly, was that this puts the money in the conservation fund at the sole discretion of expenditure by the conservation commission. And while that's Dr. Tyson, the current conservation commission's plan, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, they can spend it on whatever they want at this point.
Yes.
Are there ways to write the article there?
I, I don't think there are. Look into that, but yeah, I'm not sure that you.
Yeah, I think typically.
Could put those stipulations though.
Well, we have time before the next meeting, right, to do, develop? Or make a determination on best path forward?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like if, if, what I think we don't want to do is don't want to like push the decision so far that they can't react.
Right, right.
In a way, and it is meaningful. Uh, but going to the first meeting in January, we could answer a few of those questions of, you know, uh, you know, what can we do with the article, and what would be the implications going forward, and, and also that we can think through some of the, like, how would we budget for this if we just wanted to propose it through the budget process? But I think we would have to make a decision at the next meeting, if in the middle of February, they have to make a decision of.
The seventh of February.
Right, right. So our first meeting in January would be when we have to make, yeah, briefly.
Why don't you put down what you think needs to be altered in those articles, so I can bring them to the conservation commission special meeting, which I call.
When is that?
I don't know when it'll be done. I'm gonna send this, our concerns to the attorney, to see if some of the stuff we've been talking about is legal to even write into.
Right.
Yeah, so you can work together with the town manager's office to get that support.
Yeah, I was more like concerned about the uh, idea that there'd be a cap.
Well, I think Ed's gonna take a look at it, so he does it.
I can write the, I mean, the cap in there is not very hard.
No, I understand that.
But I think it makes sense to send a whole package through legal as one unit.
But I have to get the conservation commission's willingness to change that article, and then we can go out for signatures, and if we don't need them, we won't use them. But if we do need them, we'll have them. That's my point. That's why I don't want to be constrained on time. Because, all right, I don't have anything else to say. Do you have anything else to say to me?
I think we'll leave it between you guys who are together. Is that question? Um, uh, I think, is that Celia, maybe? And CCA, because I'm guessing it's Celia Abiero. Celia, if you'd unmute yourself, and.
So when do you want to get together, Mr.?
Just a second, Celia's unmuted.
I'll have to send it to you, and leave it down.
Go ahead, Celia. If you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. This is on our bingo board for every game, you guys, not game, meeting. Try again, do you want to, I know you unmuted her on this, or you?
I don't have the ability.
She is unmuted.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know. All right, well, Celia, if you can hear us and we can't hear you, if you want to send your comment in to Elisa and Ed, we can and Dr. Tyce can include them. Anything further on this item? Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
And then we have year ending encumbrances, if any.
Only one, I, yeah, pretty small, it's um, pull up a spreadsheet, but the twenty-five hundred dollar encumbrance from the DP, TPW Hardware and Software. I've been working with SimQuest, trying to get some prices and an order on two iPads, or a couple of our people that are out in appeals most of the time. I just haven't got those yet, so I'd like to be able to encumber that twenty-five hundred dollars to be able to spend it in the beginning of next year. Done, so it would be start of accounts line zero-one, four-one, five-zero, zero-six, three, four, four, DPW Hardware and Software.
You have a motion? I see Eric. You want to try and make a motion out of that?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, town managers designated to encumber up to twenty-five hundred dollars on account line zero-one, four-one, five-zero, zero-six, three-four for DPW Hardware and Software. Three-four-four.
Yeah. I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? See, Celia has her hand up, and I'm hoping maybe we can hear it this time. Celia, you're not muted, so try to I don't know if the microphone isn't registering. Uh, we aren't able to hear you still, Celia, I'm sorry. Um, is there any further discussion present on year-end encumbrances? Okay. All in favor of a motion? Aye, passed unanimously. There's no administrative items. We are down to other business to come before the board of selectmen, or public comments. Public? Dan?
I'm good.
Dan's a lone holdout online. Any public comments? Dave?
Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Dave. You as well. Enjoy, we're all gonna be extra good doobies and not go trucking around so that the DPW people can have a nice holiday too, right? So, and um, the office is closed, I guess we should remind people.
Christmas evening, Christmas?
Isn't?
Christmas, the day after Christmas, the twenty-sixth. I was gonna say, I was like, wait.
Isn't this a weekend?
The transfer station is closed on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, and Sunday the first.
The Enfield Garbage Social is closed.
Offices are closed Monday, the twenty-sixth, and Monday, the second, which is also posted on the signboard.
Yes, and the sign is very handy and delightful. Thank you. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Hi, second in favor? We are out. Thank you all.